Okay, so if you would please stand, do we have a flag anywhere that's prominent right behind Sam Grosso? If you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to-
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands-
One nation-
One nation under God-
Indivisible- With liberty-
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business, we'll welcome everyone to the Board of Aldermen's meeting for Monday, February 1st. Our first order of business is minutes of the previous meeting from January 19th.
No minutes, Madam President. I haven't had time to finish those. We're gonna have to wait to the next meeting. I apologize.
Okay, so we'll put those aside for the following meeting. So we are outside the rail. Is there anyone that would like to address the board on a matter that is not on the agenda? And please make sure that you state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. Well, my name is Mary Feldman. And you want my address, you said?
Please.
My address is 17 Madison Street.
Welcome, Mary.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to address the Board of Aldermen based on the, I watched the meeting from the last, the last YouTube, and I just wanted to comment on it. And I want to make sure that I am allowed to do that. Is that okay?
Certainly.
Okay. So I listened to the vote that the Board of Aldermen took at the last meeting on Alderman Humphrey's proposal and the condemnation of the acts in Washington DC. Her proposal was followed by an amendment by Alderman Depoy as a member of the community because one of the things that was requested in that meeting was, was there any community response or representation? And I think that because of COVID, you won't see a lot of people in meetings that are listening at other times. As a member of the community, I was astonished at the length of time it took for this simple vote to, to take place. And I understand that you take very seriously weighty decisions. But I was astonished because the proposal was referred to, the first one, as a waste of time and, quote, patience. And that Alderman Humphrey's proposal was, quote, extremely inflammatory and controversial, end quote. And we've seen many of our great leaders in Vermont who have made a condemnation of this, including Governor Scott. And so if we, there were clause equivalences in that last meeting, and there are parallels that we can run, and I think it is safe to say that there is a parallel that we could run, that even our, our state government stands behind condemning acts that are undemocratic and not patriotic. This summer in Rutland, my neighbors flew a Confederate flag next to my home, where I also have a pride flag flying in the window. And a young black neighbor, young girl, a black girl, walked under that flag every single day on her way to and from school. When I sought support in the community for helping to get this flag taken down, I was told repeatedly by various community members, leaders, and lawyers, it is their right. They were saying, this is a matter of the neighbors to fly this flag, a flag that was abusive in the context in which it was used for this child. And I protested because it was my right, my right of free speech to protest. However, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna distinguish between the concept of protesting, the concept of a demonstrator, a rioter, a domestic terrorist, and an insurrectionist. So I was a protester, and I utilized the concept of free speech. I was not an insurrectionist. On the TV, I watched the Confederate flag being drummed down a few weeks ago in Washington DC through the Capitol Building, and the hands of insurrectionists who had the intention of harming those who were serving their county, their country as elected leaders, such as yourself. And I would want you to imagine it like that, like somebody protesting inside the building where you were all gathered together to live out democracy. That same flag that was used as a weapon in Washington DC is also used as a weapon in Rutland, Vermont, against the rights of a child, and representing years of systemic inequality and injustice in our country and in our community. This town relies on the vitality of leadership. Our community is facing a plethora of problems that needs leadership that is strong, visionary, a model that is on the right side of history. It needs leadership that is healing. I believe a bridge between opinions is naive. But denial of truth of the actions at the Capitol Building by the leadership in our city that was carried out by the leadership of the country could be catastrophic for us. During the recording that I watched, someone, one Alderman called another Alderman divisive. I believe denial of systemic racism and oppression, a denial of the truth is actually more divisive. James Baldwin said, "The bomb has already gone off, the master bomb. It goes off and nobody notices. It destroys hearts and souls and minds while leaving bodies and refrigerators intact." If you can't agree that the bomb has already gone off in our democracy, how can you lead the community with the fragmentation and poverty it is experiencing? If the denial of truth is the baseline for 50% of the Aldermen, how can we do things like build community, attract folks to come here, and then, and pick the jobs that we have available? How do we build a place of commerce when half of the downtown is empty? How do we tackle the job, drug problem, and create a space that is safe for all if we can't agree on insurrection? And we call insurrection and speech is a big difference. A leadership that denies the claim that anarchy and insurrection during a fair election should be condemned is stunted, aggressive, detached from reality, and creates a narrative that makes it impossible for us to break through to the truth. And that would be our place of coming together, all of us, regardless of our party or belief. We can agree that water is water. I didn't see a wisdom that should accompany systems of politics. And I think that is something that has to learn. The wisdom that we have seen through the ages in various cultures. This was an opportunity for the Board of Aldermen to make a stand for democracy regardless of party, and to take a stand against systemic racism and lies against democracy. The passivity of those who voted against this resolution makes you complicit and responsible as well. I'm actually, I'm honestly horrified that it wasn't happened because this isn't cutting-edge stuff. This is a norm around the country where communities are getting together and they're agreeing the rules of party that went to place in Washington DC was anti-democratic. I want to appeal to something that, I want to appeal to your sense of love and charity. If we look back on the year, the years we've come through, there were a lot of people who were stigmatized during those years. And I think it's very important that we look into wisdom and love and charity, and whether or not we stood on the right side of history. I think it is really unfair to compare widespread constellations against people who have been shot and killed in their homes to people storming the Capitol and threatening to kill our elected leaders. I ask, if you can't express the information of spirit in your leadership, that you consider whether or not you're fit to serve and to lead our community into the wholeness that it needs. I would ask you to stop and pay attention and listen to the world around you, to your community. There was an insurrection at the Capitol. There were tremendous amounts of racially motivated symbolism and antisemitic symbolism. When I walked down the street, my neighbors said, "Hal Hitler" to me. Okay? This is in our community because they know I'm of Jewish descent. It was an attempt to subvert the democratic process. None of this is ambiguous. None of this is worthy of terrific debate. The debate should be, how do we word this to move forward quickly? And to take a stand against what should be a norm in the decorum of politics. I ask that you consider this and that you see the value of this before you continue your mission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else outside the rail to address a matter with this board that is not on the agenda?
Hi, my name's Christopher Lara. You guys hear me? Am I breaking up on this thing?
Really fine.
I appreciate an opportunity to speak. I've spoken before. I live in Chittenden, but I've been working in and around the Rutland area for 20 years. And I was an active part of having the, the white couple supremacists next door here on Pleasant Madison. It was a long, hard struggle in some ways, but they eventually took that flag down. And the Black Lives Matter flag flies there proudly. And that young black girl no longer has to walk under a flag that reminds her that white people think she's a nigger. So thank God that those people understood what was happening because it was getting to the point where, you know, it could have gotten really bad. Making any kind of equivalence to the protests throughout the summer for the murder of George Floyd and countless other male and female black people who are unarmed in this country with what went on in the Capitol in support of a maniacal, completely disconjoined narcissistic cartoon as a president is, is the act of extreme folly. I mean, the only thing that I could, the only thing that I can really say to try to put, you know, some kind of eloquence to my own outrage about the vote on the five members, I think, who failed to do their job, that I think Frederick Douglass said it better, and I'm probably paraphrasing, paraphrasing, excuse me. It's easier to educate children than it is to repair broken men. And so, you know, I urge the five members that really failed to do their duty to step down and resign immediately. Rutland hasn't had a vision for a long time. I don't think the five of you that remain are gonna add anything positive in the community. And I think we need more diversity of thought. There might be some other radical Republicans who want to take a conservative view. There could be gay, lesbian, trans, black, white, Muslim, American Indian people, whoever that can take your seats and replace you. And I do think it's time for some accountability, folks. And, you know, I think self-reflection and accountability are two things that seldom exist anymore. So have some integrity and step down. I urge you to step down. That's the good thing.
Yes, I appreciate your comments. We're moving on. Is there anyone else outside the rail that wishes to address the board on matters not on the agenda? If not, we're on to communications from the mayor, Mary Leir.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Just had one item I wanted to mention tonight. Earlier today, I sent the board a short memo explaining my support for the buy-up recommendation you have on your agenda tonight for funding for Healthy Design LTD, which of course is a business startup located in the old Rutland Herald building at 27 Whale Street. I just wanted to note that this is exactly what we're looking to promote, and that's a retrofit of an existing building, in this instance in downtown Rutland, but anywhere in the city. And I am pleased and excited to support this effort, the initial five jobs that it's gonna create, and want to send a message to, to Rutland City folks and folks elsewhere that we are supportive of not only this effort, any and all ideas to grow our economy and repopulate our downtown core, which is what we're all working to do and support the city. So I just wanted to make note of that as you're going through your agenda tonight. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So on to additions and deletions. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, we're on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First we have Brennan Duffy, RRA Director, RRA Board Recommendation for Buy-App Grant. And Brennan, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Before I start, I believe our applicant, Dr. Marie Pavini, might be on the call here. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, I am, Brennan.
Okay, great. Well, I'll let Dr. Pavini speak as well, but as the mayor just mentioned, we have a really exciting new business that's looking to open up here in downtown Rutland. And this will be an actual medical device manufacturing startup that started out in the mint space and has graduated from there and is looking for a permanent home and is looking to look at renovating part of the old Herald building and moving there. So I think I'd actually like to let Dr. Pavini discuss a little bit about her project, and then I can come back and talk about the recommendation that the RRA has made.
All right, thank you. So there's been requests, folks, who are on the phones. If you could please mute yourself, there's getting some background noise if you are not speaking. So Dr. Pavini, you have the floor, and welcome.
Thank you very much. So yeah, I'd like to actually tell you a little bit about the company. Healthy Design is, as mentioned, a startup. It started at the mint, which is a great place for companies and people with ideas to get help and move forward and do good things for people. And so I'm an ICU physician. And as I do my rounds daily, I see people who are very, very ill, usually on ventilators, that's breathing machines. And the status quo at this time is for someone who is on a breathing machine, or even someone who's just confused and has tubes and lines in them, mostly the elderly, end up getting tied to the bed by their wrists with these little wrist restraints. They look like soft little bracelets. And this is very counterintuitive and harmful. People get delirium, they get pressure ulcers, they get lots of really bad things. And it's been, it's been just going on for decades because nobody's really thought to change it. It's just in the background, and we think it's part of what has to happen, but it doesn't have to happen that way. And so we came up with a device that allows patients to move their arms without getting caught up in their tubes and lines. And so people won't be agitated, they won't be scared, they won't be anxious, and they won't need to get over-sedated and be comatose. They'll be able to relate and interact with their families and with staff. And we'll be able to find out more about what's wrong with them when we can interact with them. So there's so much good that can come from a device like this. I got an NIH grant, and we're at the tail end of the third year for that grant, which is, goes for clinical trials. The clinical trials are being done at UVM, UC San Diego, and Johns Hopkins. And the NIA, that is the National Institute on Aging, wholly supports this effort. We also have some other devices for the same space and for the same reason, to get people to be more interactive, involved in their own healing. And so we're hoping to help change the culture of ICUs. There are lots of studies out there now that, that support this and have data. So we're making headway. We're making good headway. And we're becoming noticed. And it's, the whole idea of, of people being better cared for in a more humane way is also gaining ground. So that's kind of it. I'd like, I just wanted to really make you aware that this happens in an ICU, that you should not accept it, and that you should look for solutions. I stand ready, as was mentioned in an article recently, to help anybody that has ideas in this space. And even if it's not in this space, I can probably help direct it to people who can. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Brennan?
So the RRA reviewed the application at our last meeting and is enthusiastically endorsing this and recommending to the board that they approve a $5,000 buy-up grant for the new business.
Thank you. So we need a motion-
Motion to suspend the rules.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Grosso?
I'm trying to find the, the application here. I printed everything out. Hang on. Whatever. Hang on, it's in here. It's, we're authorizing the mayor, I believe, to-
No, if I can help you, we're authorizing, we're approving the $5,000 buy-up grant to the Healthy Design LTD company.
So moved. Thank you.
We have a second by Alderman Gill. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chris, I think Chris had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris. Yes, please.
Well, that's all right.
Didn't recognize it.
Thank you, Alderman Clifford, Alderman Davis. So when this application was brought to the RRA, obviously, everybody on that board is very supportive of this kind of work. And to the mayor's point, that is why we have that buy-up funding, to help support people like this. It's a great story and one that we really should try to promote, and, you know, for other people, as the mayor has said, for other people in the community as well. I hope that, you know, the other piece of this is something is, is more than just the $5,000, is what are the other pieces we need to do to help entrepreneurs like Dr. Pavini to, Pavini, to do the work and to, you know, what are the other challenges and how do we help them through those? So super supportive of this. And I appreciate the mayor's support and Brennan's support as well. Thank you.
Any other debate? So I'm just gonna ask for the vote again, so we're clear. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brennan. Anything else?
Not for this one, no. Thank you very much.
So next we have Barbara Spalding, RRA B-Trans Scoping Study for Center Street. Are you covering that, or do we have Barbara?
I can cover that if needed. I think Barbara might be on the line as well.
I am, but go ahead.
We're basically just asking, as you know, we had a grant award that came through to work on the Center Street scoping study, which is gonna be looking at making those temporary changes that were done last summer and will be done again on a temporary basis this summer into a more permanent solution for that part of the central downtown. So we really are just asking tonight for the mayor to be authorized to sign the grant agreement that we received last week. And then we will begin the process with putting together and sending out an RFP for consultants to bid on that work. And hopefully we'll have that started here at the end of March or early April.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Do we have a second? We have a second from Alderman Gill. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city. The scoping study grant to advance Center Street project.
We have a second to Alderman Grosso.
Second.
Alderman Gill, you have a debate? Okay, we're just seconding. Is there any debate? Barbara, is there anything that you want to add?
Nope, I think we're all set.
Okay. All those in favor of authorizing the mayor to sign the scoping study of $28,800 to advance the Center Street project, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You as well.
Thank you.
To Tara Kelly, Building and Zoning Administrator, City-Owned Property Discussion and Time Extension-
Yes, this is, yep, I'm here. So in your packets, there was a memo from me explaining that the owners of 31 East Street would like to ask for an extension on the timeframe they had put in their original development plan for rehabbing this property. There was a letter from them as well as some photos of the, that shows the progress they've made, which is pretty significant. And they expect to have the work completed by June 1st of this year. So if it was, if the board is in agreement, then we will go ahead and allow them that time extension.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second?
Second.
We had a second from Alderman E. Torry, Clerk Heck. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Authorize the owners of 31 East Street to extend their building plans, I guess, to June 2021, as requested by Tara Kelly, the planning director and zoning administrator.
Second.
Any debate on the motion? Any questions for Tara? Alderman Gill? Can't hear you. Bill, can't hear you. Can't hear you. Never mind. Okay, anyone else? All those in favor of approving the extension to June 1st, 2021, please say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Right, thank you.
Welcome Tara. We are on to reports of standing committees. First we have Alderman Mattis, Charter and Ordinance. Alderman Mattis?
Charter and Ordinance Committee met in January 26. Committee members present were myself, Sam Grosso, Chris E. Torry, Melinda Humphrey. Other Aldermen present were Paul Clifford, Michael Talbot, Tom Depoy, and President Matt Whitcomb. And others present were Building Inspector Bob Pelletier, Brennan Duffy, and Dave Cooper from the RRA, City Treasurer Mary Markowski, and City Attorney Matt Blumer. The meeting convened at 5:31 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to continue reviewing the sign ordinance draft. This new draft is the result of in-depth discussion with most of the Board of Aldermen, as well as sign professionals, business owners, and other interested parties. The first half of the new draft was reviewed in early December. We began this meeting with Section 9. These minutes will not detail every change to the original draft, but just the sections for which there was major discussion. So we discussed projecting signs. Most projecting signs downtown are larger than the original draft would allow, and the committee was generally in favor of making the allowance larger. It was agreed that larger buildings can host larger projecting signs that would be inappropriate in smaller buildings. Also, such signs on the second story of a building can be larger than on the first story and still be very attractive. Two solutions were proposed, making a limited waiver provision and linking the size of the sign to the building frontage. And the chair agreed to draft language to the latter effect. Window signs were discussed at length, and the committee decided that to limit window signs to 50% of the window area would be appropriate. We discussed portable signs in the city right-of-way. There was a lot of concern about safety because these signs can block the view of traffic for motorists pulling out into the roadway. We agreed that the main issue with these is enforcement and that the language in the current draft is sufficient to allow for enforcement. We discussed electronic message boards, also called EMBs. The committee was uneasy with the new proposed limit of 16 square feet for these signs. The chair agreed to provide the committee with more information as to examples of these signs in the city. The suggestion was also made to increase the time allowed before a message change. We discussed the grandfather clause. Building Inspector Bob Pelletier brought a concern to the committee that the provision needs to be clarified to not grandfather signs for abandoned businesses. And the chair agreed to draft appropriate language. Most of the committee agreed with the draft language that requires an incoming new business to alter an existing sign to make it a conforming sign. Alderman Depoy would like to grandfather all signs for the lifetime of the sign. Alderman E. Torry suggested that our- Alderman Torrey suggested that RRA grants could be offered to new businesses to make these sign changes similar to the buy-up grants. Bob informed the committee that many businesses remove sign structures as soon as they vacate a building without issues. Attorney Blumer said the draft needs to clarify what it means to remove a sign, removing the sign face or removing the sign structure. He said that he can draft language that matches the committee's legislative intent. The committee reviewed the rest of the draft and came to the end. Chair will make the desired changes and bring the final draft to the committee where the issue remains. And the meeting adjourned around 7:26 PM, and this report is for informational.
Thank you, Alderman Mattis. Is there any questions of Alderman Mattis regarding her report? Seeing none, thank you very much. We are on to Alderman Torrey Finance Committee.
Thank you, Alderwoman Davis. Uh, the Finance Committee met on January 28th. The agenda item was the second quarter treasurer's report from FY21. Committee members present were myself, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman DePoy, Garuso, and Alderwoman Humphrey. Other Aldermen present were Alderman Clifford, Gillum, and Talbot. Others present were Treasurer Mary Markowski. The meeting began at 5:32 PM to review the treasurer's report for the second quarter of FY21. The treasurer started by reviewing her summary. She noted the pooled cash account is lower than this time last year primarily because of expenses in sewer projects. The money will be reimbursed as the requisitions are filed. The treasurer noted that our funds are placed in safe investments during this uncertain time. The treasurer noted that delinquencies are higher than we would like, although collections are steady and in line with last year. She noted that the program through the state to help people pay their water and sewer utility bills during COVID was a huge help to keep people, to keeping people current. Looking at the general fund income summary, the treasurer noted that the RME budget was reduced significantly for FY21 due to COVID, and we received $233,753, or about 59% of that budgeted amount. However, this is about $49,000 less than last year at this time, indicating that while it is better than projected, the impact of COVID is still significant. Revenue for the Rec Department programs at $188,000 is holding strong to budgeted amounts, but significantly less than the $294,000 from last year. It was noted that the Rec Department is bringing in significant grant funding for the essential care programs and other programs they are offering. Overall, non-tax revenues are doing better than budgeted, which is a good sign for ending the fiscal year in a strong financial position. Next, the treasurer discussed the general fund expense summary. Of important note here are comparing the expenses to the recisions made by the administration. Expenses are keeping in line with the recisions at about 50%. One note to watch in the coming reports will be the healthcare expenses. The expenses were budgeted at a 10% increase for FY21, but healthcare costs have gone up 18% for calendar year 21. Looking at the proprietary funds, water and sewer are in, are in line with revenue and, and expenses. The parking fund is down as expected given COVID, and the Transit Funder, Transit Center Fund is also showing lower revenues than expected. The committee also discussed the debt schedules. The treasurer has developed a new way to report the information to help the board see the impact of the various bonds and how they change over time. The chair noted his appreciation for the work of the treasurer in providing this information in a very accessible format, which will help future boards understand the impacts of cure, of current and future bonds. The meeting concluded at 6:15 PM.
Is there any questions of Alderman Torrey and his Finance Committee report? I'm just going to remind, if you are not speaking, please mute yourself. We're getting a lot of feedback. Okay? I would appreciate that. Thank you. So are there any reports of standing, um, excuse me, smoking committees? I, I, caller 13. Caller 13, you need to mute yourself, please. Thank you. Uh, maybe this, maybe Matt, you could do that for them. Uh, I think they got it finally. That's good. Um, uh, again, reports of soli- committees, any? Reports of representatives? We are on to petitions, letters, and police communications. We have the Rave Car Show July 10th and 11th, 2021. This is the courtesy notification only. So there is, because the rave car show is held at the fairgrounds, it is not held on any city-owned property. You would see that none, nothing is signed off because there is no requirement to do this. Um, the gentleman from the rave car show just courteously always let the board know when this is occurring. And, um, just to give us some information. Alderman Garuso?
Yes, uh, I don't know. Is Nate McKay with us tonight?
Um, I'm not sure. Is anyone here representing the rave car show?
Well, years, years ago, it's, it's not a huge deal, but it kind of is to regional, um, uh, years ago, Regional Ambulance did a little bit of searching and whatever and kept finding themselves called Rutland Ambulance and, and Rutland Regional Ambulance. And of course, God bless the city because Rutland City started it, but they started it by getting other towns involved, and that's why they named it Regional. We have West Rutland and Castleton and, and, and Pittsford's involved and Mendon and Killington. And, you know, it's, 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 uh, 13 towns, so 12 towns. So what happens is, is they, they worked very hard in, in making people realize that they're called Regional Ambulance. And he has down what arrangements have been made for emergency medical services. And he has down that Rutland Regional will be on site. Well, Rutland Regional's the medical center. Um, Regional Ambulance is the ambulance service. So just a little thing that hasn't happened with Regional a long time. They spent a lot of time and effort promoting their name as Regional Ambulance. And the reason for it was so they didn't offend any of the other towns because they didn't want to have Rutland in their name because they were, were just as much a part of Clarendon as we are. So, and Rutland. So just wanted to throw that out there as an information thing for everybody that Regional Ambulance Services, everybody's ambulance service and quite proud of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So again, the rave car show will be July 10th and 11th at the Vermont Fairgrounds. So could you please, could folks, if you are not participating, please mute yourself. We have caller 17 needs to mute themselves. So if we could have a motion to-
Didn't hear that, Sharon.
Just need a most, excuse me, a motion to receive and place on file the rave car show request.
So moved.
Your second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. There is nothing under the Board of Commissioners. We are under unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before this board? Seeing none. We are under miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Is there any resolutions, miscellaneous motions, or new business to come before this board? If not, a motion to adjourn be in order.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chairman.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Have a wonderful evening.